County Board of Education meeting, December 2nd, 2025. And we're gonna start tonight's meeting with a moment of silence. And next up, we'll have the presentation of the colors and the pledge of allegiance from the North Brunswick High School, JROTC. All right, next up, we'll have approval of the regular meeting agenda. If I can have a motion to approve the agenda as written. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Cook. On purpose, aye?
Aye.
And next up, we'll have public address. And Mr. Cronk, if you could read the policy and then also call the first speaker.
Yes, sir. Presentations will be limited to three minutes per person. Discussions regarding particular individual employees, litigation, student records, or other matters which may be required to be kept confidential, may not be discussed in the open forum setting. The chairman will have the responsibility to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate and rule the speaker out of order if necessary. And our first public address is Mr. William Inman. If no William Inman, we have Mr. Brian Rupp.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Rupp. I'm here to talk about something that sounds kind of insignificant, but has a great impact on our students' daily lives. And that's about the amount of time they get to sit and eat in the cafeteria. Across our district, many students aren't getting the 20 minutes of seated mealtime recommended by most major public health and educational organizations such as the CDC and the School Nutrition Association. Excuse me. On paper, many of our schools schedule 20 to 25 minutes for lunch daily, but rarely do students get to see that much time. We don't consider the realities of students walk to the cafeteria, they're wait in line, there's time to find a seat, settle down, prepare their meal, and then begin eating. By the time they get to the actual matter-of-fact goal to eat, they have only fractions of the 20 minutes left. When students don't have enough time to eat, they skip the healthiest parts of their meal in favor of faster, more satisfying options. Younger students who naturally eat more slowly and take more prep time are the ones who would take the biggest hit here. They lose the most time due to reduced seat time. This is also a question of fairness. Students who bring their lunch from home can eat quickly and avoid the cafeteria line. There's a very different experience for students who rely on school meals. Neurodivergent students and children with sensory needs often require extra time to transition and don't get time to eat. I believe teachers will tell a similar story after a rushed lunch. Kids come back to the class hungry, irritable, distracted, unregulated, hangry, if you will. Afternoon instruction becomes harder, behavior incidents arise, nurse visits increase. We talk constantly about improving academic performance, about raising test scores, about strengthening classroom behavior, but none of that can happen if you have a room full of hungry kids who are distracted by something other than what you're teaching them. Hunger is not a discipline problem. It's not a personal choice. In this case, it's a design failure. It's our responsibility to fix that. I'm asking this board to undertake a clear, public review of actual seat time across the county, audit the minutes that students truly have to sit down and eat after the process, the logistics of getting their meal, getting to and from the cafeteria, and then work openly and collaborate with teachers, principals, parents, other stakeholders to ensure every child has 20 minutes to actually eat their meal in Brunswick County. This is simple. When students are fed, they can learn. When they're hungry, they are distracted. That's the end of the story. Reduced seat time is a recurring, widespread quality of life issue this board can solve today. I ask you to take the time to do it. Thank you.
All right, next up, we'll have board salutes. Jeff, you want to lead us off?
Sure, yes, you want to lead?
Sure.
We're here with Trune today.
Oh, yes, I can. Hello. We're here with Trune today. We were fortunate enough to have our third CHOPED event. It's a fundraiser for our culinary program. Our culinary program is new and just started five years ago. We raised with their members and were given over $3,000 for our students. This goes directly to our culinary program. Our culinary program is almost self-sustaining at this point. We do several fundraisers. We are inspected by the health inspector. We run a real catering business, just like any of the restaurants in the area. We are licensed to cater outside groups as well as educational groups. So these are our students. If y'all could just tell me your names right quick and your home school.
My name is Jaylen Durr. I go to the coast full-time.
My name is Erin McGoughlin. I go to the coast full-time.
My name is Leo Schuff, and I'm from West Brunswick High School.
My name is Lucas Chapman, and I'm from North Brunswick High School.
Thank you. This is half of our group. We had eight students who prepared small appetizers, just like the professionals. Their members tasted everything and voted on the winners. Our winner was Erin. Raise your hand. Erin came with his family barbecue recipe, and Jaylen's team was runner-up. So we're missing half our group. The kids are out in the community catering with us a lot this season. So also, I have Gary Hockham here from Trune St. James. They did highlight us in their newsletter, highlighted the kids and what we do here, all the skills we give the kids in CTE. CTE focuses on putting kids directly into the workforce, whatever their path may be. So obviously, this is a culinary program, but we have lots of classes here at the coast that put our kids directly into career and technical ed programs. So do you want to say anything about... So their newsletter went worldwide, so we were featured worldwide with Trune. So thank you so much for all you do for us, and we love our partnership. Thank you.
We should mention that this group fed us tonight, and it was delicious. Thank you so much.
And next up, we have the superintendent's winner card winners. Mr. Cole, you want to kick us off with that?
I think, so I'm gonna read through the list. I think maybe I'm gonna do it from over there.
Or I got it. Either one.
Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Chairman Berger, Superintendent Cole, and board members. I'm gonna take over here, and you guys are stuck with me for a while because we got a lot of things to read off. So it's a pleasure to be here tonight to celebrate the amazing talent of our students in the BCS superintendent's winner card contest. Each year, this contest brings out the creativity-infested spirit of our young artists, and this year was no exception. And I'd also like to thank all the students who participated in the contest. It's wonderful to see the talent and imagination of our students on full display. A big thank you to the teachers and families who encouraged and supported these students, and now it's time to recognize our winners. In the elementary division, Amelia Sexton, 5th grade, Belleville Elementary, and her visual arts teacher is Kathy Peck.
We have her here.
And Tori, can you bring up her card? No, up there.
Here is your portrait.
There we go.
And if you could come over here with Mr. Cole and get a picture, we would really appreciate that. And you can just stand right under that sign. And, well, should we do elementary and then picture?
Do them all together?
I'm in charge, I guess. So here we go. Mr. Cole, if you want to line up over here and get a picture?
We'll do elementary, middle, and then high. Two, one.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. All right, Molly's gonna get pictures. I'm gonna hang out over here. So next, we're gonna do middle school. Ooh, and that is Ms. Venus, in 8th grade, South Brunswick Middle School, and her visual arts teacher is Elizabeth Simpson. Ms. Venus? Picture right over there. The artwork is just incredible this year. All right, and next up, we have high school. The high school division was Liliana Miller. She's in 10th grade from North Brunswick High School, and the visual arts teacher is Shane Miller. And I think everyone is in here today. No? No? I'm sorry, Liliana Miller is not here today, so we will present that to her later. So next up, we would like to shine an important light on somebody. On behalf of Brunswick County Schools and this Board of Education, it is my honor to recognize Lindsay Fowler as Brunswick County's Outstanding Secondary Mathematics Teacher of the Year. Lindsay, your talent, dedication, and daily impact have earned this well-deserved honor. Your turn, you turn "I can't do math" into "I've got this" every single day. Lindsay Fowler, we are incredibly proud to call you one of ours. Please join me in giving Lindsay a loud board salute. Congratulations. And my apologies on that. I feel like I rushed that. Let's give another hand of applause for Lindsay Fowler. I jumped straight from winner art cards, straight to Lindsay Fowler, and did not give a proper introduction there. So let's jump into the next one. So we're gonna do EVOs now, and this is celebrating teachers who exceeded growth. Tonight, I have the privilege of shining a light on something truly worth celebrating. Our teachers who exceeded and expected growth on EVOs this year. These are not just numbers on a report. These are educators who refuse to let circumstances defy outcomes, who built relationships, adjusted instruction in real time, and pushed our students further any algorithm predicted was possible. They did this while juggling new standards, new tools, and sometimes new students arriving mid-year. And they did it because they believe every single day that growth isn't optional, it's personal. Thank you for proving once again that when you put great teachers in front of our kids, extraordinary things happen. Board members, these educators didn't just meet the bar, they raised it. So let's give them a round of applause. And first up will be Wanda McLamb from Belleville Elementary. And I'm gonna do this by elementary, middle, and then high school. So bear with me as I kind of line up everybody over there. And next, we'll do Catherine Bunne from Belleville Elementary. And next up is Cindy Hines from Belleville Elementary. And then we have Brittany Hunt from Belleville Elementary. And then, I don't have Laura Woodburn on my sheet, but I just want to make sure. Is she here? Nope? Okay. And then, from Jesse May Monroe, we have Melissa Schweitzer. And Southport, we have Missy Wayland, Melissa Wayland. And Andrea Mullen from Southport Elementary. Emily Kelly from Supply Elementary. And Pamela Rohr from Southport Elementary. Renee Freeman from Supply Elementary. Lori Crabtree from Supply Elementary. Crabtree, sorry. Juliet Dalton from Supply Elementary. Julie Dalton? Jill Dawkins, Town Creek Elementary. Settle Dawkins, Town Creek Elementary. Amy Bath, Town Creek Elementary. Melissa Burns, Union Elementary. Holly Needham, Union Elementary. Jennifer Oaks, Union Elementary. Taylor Futrell, Union Elementary. Jennifer Adcock, Union Elementary. Emily Berger, Union Elementary. Tammy Pickard, Union Elementary. Tatsy Lanier, Union Elementary. I knew I needed to come over here. Julie Needham, Virginia Williamson Elementary. Elizabeth DeHaro, Virginia Williamson Elementary. Kristen Hartman, Virginia Williamson Elementary. Christina Harden, Virginia Williamson Elementary. Angel Holly, Virginia Williamson Elementary. Heather Bullock, Virginia Williamson Elementary. Margaret Zhang, Waukamaw School. Zazzy Fox, Waukamaw School. Last but not least, Megan Bellamy, Waukamaw School. Let's give them another round of applause for the elementary. But we're not done yet. We still have middle school, Ms. Holly Hudson. She's from Shalote Middle. Melissa Hughes, Shalote Middle School. Muriel Watson, South Brunswick Middle School. Jeffrey Record, Town Creek Middle School. Let's give them another round of applause. These are our middle school EVOs teachers who exceeded growth. All right, now we're on to high school. Ms. Shelby Leonard, Early College High School. Katherine Bannerman, North Brunswick High School. Christian Kern, South Brunswick High School. Amber Cook, West Brunswick High School. And Clouseau Gauz, West Brunswick High School. Did I pronounce that right? How do you say her name? Eloise Gauz. Sorry, the writing on it. It's the font. And I'm not done yet, Mr. Cole.
Oh, that means I'm not done.
All right, so next, we are gonna shift focus to growth at Town Creek Elementary School. And on behalf of Brunswick County Schools and this- And on behalf of Brunswick County Schools and this Board of Education, I'm thrilled to recognize Principal Tracy Costin of Town Creek Elementary School for an extraordinary accomplishment, leading her school to achieve overall growth for the 24-25 school year. Tracy, this didn't happen by accident. It happened because you set a clear vision, built a culture where every teacher and every student believed growth was possible, and then refused to let anyone settle for less. You celebrated the small wins, tackled the tough challenges head-on, and kept the focus exactly where it belongs, on the kids. And because of your leadership, Town Creek Elementary School didn't just meet the bar. Your students and staff soared above it. Tracy Costin, we are so proud of you and every single dolphin at Town Creek Elementary School. Maybe a little too wordy? And we're not done yet, because next, on behalf of Brunswick County Schools and the Board of Education, I'm proud to recognize Principal Sam Jennings of Union Elementary School for leading his school to achieve overall growth in the 24-25 school year. Sam, this is what true leadership looks like, setting the tone that every child can grow, every teacher can shine, and every day is a chance to get better and then make it happen. You rallied your union family, removed obstacles, and kept the mission front and center. Sam Jennings, you make us all proud to be Brunswick-built. All right. And we're going to move on. We have two more things left. We're going to celebrate Belleville next. There's never a convenient time for an unexpected shelter in place, but if one had to happen, Friday afternoon at dismissal might just be the worst possible moment. Yet in the chaos, our entire staff responded like the crisis professionals they are. Their execution was flawless, calm, precise, and focused entirely on keeping every single student safe. We wish we could shine a spotlight on every single one of them tonight, because they all earned it. But since we only have a few here with us, they'll accept the recognition on behalf of the whole team. On behalf of everyone at BCS, thank you to the Belleville staff and community. Your preparedness and care made all the difference. We are proud of you and our community is safer because of you. Kimberly Marrone. Brianna Ayers. Ms. Allison Dixon. And Deputy SRO Michael Rich. We have some extra people here. TK Noel. Chad Hughes. Jennifer Price. We have a few others to be recognized. Holly Turner. Well, let's start. Well, let me read this off. And then we have one more school to recognize. When an unexpected crisis situation arose at North Brunswick High School, our safety team and our well-practiced procedures truly shown. Every step was handled with the highest level of care, calm, and professionalism, ensuring the safety and well-being of our students and staff remain the top priority. On behalf of the entire BCS community, I want to extend our deepest gratitude to the staff at North Brunswick High School and everyone who played a role today. Your preparation, composure, and dedication made all the difference. Margaret Rollison. Maggie Rollison, who is the principal of North Brunswick High School. Josh Parker, the assistant principal of North Brunswick High School. Cameron Hankins, North Brunswick High School. Gray Connolly, North Brunswick High School. Arnold Floyd, the SRO of North Brunswick High School. Ashley Williams, the SRO of North Brunswick High School. We'd also like to honor Ashley Ward and Holly Turner for their heroic efforts in all of this as well.
All right, and next up, we're going to have the comprehensive annual fiscal report from Anderson Smith and Mike.
Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Cole, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to report the results of the June 30th, 2025 fiscal audit. You may have noticed that the audit is in draft form. The reason it's in draft form, we don't expect any numbers to change. However, the federal government has to sign some documents in order for us to be able to release audits. They typically sign these documents in May. This year, they did not sign the documents until last Wednesday, right before Thanksgiving. So there's some things that we cannot do to be able to go through issuing the audit until we have those documents. So we are in the process of going through those and anticipate having a final issuance this week. We have been doing board presentations and feel it's most important to get the information to you in regards to fund balance and the district performance. The only thing we expect to change on the audit is going to be the date of issuance. So all of the numbers, we don't expect any numbers to change, just the date of issuance. So that is why and kind of what's going on with that and our last-minute change in the fact that we've been saying we didn't have them and now we do, but we're still kind of in limbo, but again, anticipate any day. So pleased to report an unmodified opinion on the Brunswick County Board of Education's audit for June 30th, 2025. Excellent job. This is a longstanding opinion for the district. A lot of work goes into it by the Finance Department and really throughout the district, because it's a collaborative effort in order to achieve this kind of under the direction of the Finance Department. So excellent job to the staff. Some required communications, significant accounting estimates. These are going to be the same estimates that we would have reported last year and would be reported across the state with the exception of the value of sick leave. There was a new accounting standard that went into place this year that now requires the recording of the value of sick leave that is likely to be used by employees. This liability does not factor into fund balance. It's on other schedules because it does not get paid out. Only annual leave is able to get paid out. So that is a new estimate this year because we don't know which employees will use their sick leave versus hold it until retirement. However, again, not impactful on fund balance or the schedules that we're going to go through tonight. We did not identify any misstatements and had no disagreements or difficulties with management. They did an excellent job at getting things to us in a very organized way, having all the details, all the supporting information, and as we had several questions, as we typically would, they were very quick at being able to respond to us and get us any additional documentation or information that we needed. So excellent job on the part of the Finance. Looking at fund balance, the general fund is where we recommend focusing on. That's going to be the funds that you're able to hold at the district on an ongoing basis for the general education of the students. During the year, the district spent about 1.7 million in fund balance. Fund balance for the district is going to be comparable to what you would consider the savings account for the district. They started the year with $34.2 million, so ended the year with about $32.6 million in fund balance. The capital outlay fund is going to be the fund that you can also hold fund balance in that is going to be for the capital maintenance of the buildings. In this fund, 664,000 was used during the year. Started the year with between 4.4 and 4.5 million, ending the year with a little under $3.8 million in fund balance. I will say on the capital outlay fund, we do see that one vary typically a little bit more just because our cutoff is June 30th, which is going to be the middle of the summer. As you all know, a lot of the major construction, any major projects that are going on at schools with students at are going to really happen over the summer. So we're cutting off right in the middle of that time period. So between one year and the next, we will typically see fluctuation in the capital outlay fund. Our restricted revenue is going to be largely restricted for grants that the district receives and other restricted funding sources. And state and federal are not able to hold fund balance. You utilize the funds. If you don't utilize any of the funds, they go back to the state of North Carolina. Looking at the funds, the biggest thing to point out that we'll point out on the balance sheet is going to be the subsequent year's expenditures. So looking at the total fund balance of the 32.56 million, 4.6 million has been appropriated into the 25-26 budget as potential to be used during this fiscal year in the current budget. So about $26.6 million is available for future use to the district as needs arise. Looking at budget and all of the amendments that the board passes, pleased to report that the district came within budget in all areas. So excellent job at being able to project and maintain the budget within the amounts that you all, as the board, have passed. The Child Nutrition Fund is reported a little bit differently because of the accounting standards required for this fund. So we look at cash rather than fund balance to evaluate the financial performance of the program. They added $193,000 in cash and ended with a little under $7.1 million. We are seeing across the state that the Child Nutrition Fund specifically is typically decreasing in cash. And this is partially because of federal USDA reimbursements decreasing after COVID, increased cost of food, increased labor and benefit costs. So I would say excellent job to be able to see an increase in the child nutrition program. That is among the rare presentations that I get to do is saying that there's an increase. So excellent job maintaining fiscal balances in your child nutrition program. Audit findings and question costs. We reviewed the financial statements, did not identify any findings. We reviewed federal and state awards for for use and how those funds were spent according to grant guidelines. Did not identify any areas where any funds were not used according to grant guidelines. Separate from the audit report, we did have a management letter that was provided to the board. The district identified early in the spring some issues at West Brunswick High School in regards to some athletic events and deposits, as well as receipts, receipt books that staff members had. And cash was not able to be traced to the bank account in all instances. That was identified by the district. We came in, did further analysis and confirmation of what the district identified and have reported that as a separate letter, not within the statements, because the district did have controls in place to identify that there was an issue. Looking at supplementary information. This report reviews the revenue over the last several years, broken down by the source of revenue. The biggest thing to look at, state funds, as state revenue goes up, it's typically going to come with, almost always going to come with, increased salaries, increased benefit costs, those types of things are the things that we've seen over the last several years in regards to state increases, also state increases for ADM. As student headcount increases, there will be state increases. But again, with that is also going to come the increased need for teachers and various other salaries. The big one here to look at is going to be federal. You can see the federal funds really increased, '21, '22, '23, '24. That's going to be the Essar funds. As you see, the district has come off of those. So the decrease in fund balance this year is something that we are seeing across the state. You guys had built up and had the fund balance to be able to kind of ease off of those Essar funds at this point, and '25, '26 is the first year where no Essar funds are available. However, increased costs, salaries, benefits, and those type of things are still in place. So from a federal standpoint, the district doesn't get extra dollars for those increases for, again, salaries, benefits, those types of things. So how far a dollar went in 2020, the dollar doesn't go quite as far in 2025. Expenditures by type, as you can see, by and large, instructional. Those are going to be, I put the definitions of instructional and system-wide support, but by and large, that's going to be kind of direct with students. System-wide support is going to include things such as buses, bus drivers, maintenance, custodial, the cost of utilities at the school and those types of things. Capital outlay, and then other is going to be other related expenses, including charter school payments. And this is going to be the fund balance over time. As you can see, As you can see, it increased. The district was able to increase as some of the Esser funds came into the district again. So the fact that the district increased, decreased some this year kind of goes with saving and being able to come off of those Esser funds. And as I mentioned, capital outlay is going to vary based upon the projects going on over the summer. That's all I have. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And next up, we have reorganization of the board and Mr. Cole, you are now running the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Barger. The organizational meeting of the Board of Education has been called to order. We have a quorum present. One of the purposes of this meeting is the election of board officers. The first order of business is the election of the chairman. Just as a reminder, nominations do not require a second and no motion is needed to close the nomination. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of chairman for the Brunswick County Board of Education. Do I hear nominations for the office of board chair?
I would like to nominate Steve Ganey as board chair.
Okay, we have a nomination. All those in favor of Steve Ganey as board chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that Mr. Steve Ganey is duly nominated and elected as chair of the Brunswick County Board of Education for a one-year term. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over to our new chairman, Mr. Steve Ganey.
Can I see if this works, Mr. Cole?
Sure.
It's a new one. So you got a new chairman and a new gavel. The gavel's more experienced than I am, probably.
Well, it is. It's been hit twice today.
We also need to address the vice chair position. And so the floor is still open for nominations for that role. Do I hear any nominations for the office of vice chair?
I would like to nominate Vicki Smith for vice chair.
Vicki Smith has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll take a vote on Ms. Smith's nomination. All in favor of Vicki Smith as vice chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And let the record show, Vicki Smith is duly nominated and elected as vice chair of the Brunswick County Board of Education for a one-year term. The vote was unanimous. Very good. We're going to take a two or three minute break. We got to reorganize our seating in addition to reorganizing our offices and just a quick break, we'll be right back.
Wait, we have offices?
Check out your office open.
Okay, so we're back to our normal monthly business. And first up is approval of minutes. And what we're approving, our regular minute, meeting minutes from November the 5th, November the 18th curriculum, same date, November the 18th operations and also finance, HR on November the 18th. Do I hear a motion to approve? A motion by Mr. Barger?
Second.
A second, second by Ms. Moffett. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll go into committee reports. Ms. Smith, curriculum and policy.
Yes. So we had a presentation about Coastal Horizons Art Training Program. We discussed Brunswick County Schools student fees, which will be posted online after tonight. And we had several policy updates. All are on the action agenda for second reading tonight. And that's it.
Okay. We'll move on to operations. Ms. Cook?
All right. For operations, we just had three items. One of them was West Brunswick High School Tennis Court Settlement Agreement, which was in reference to some issues that had occurred with installation of the tennis courts and how that's going to be handled. They're going to be repaired at no expense to us. That's going to be in that settlement agreement. And then we had a discussion about modular units at Union Elementary based on the new ADM projections. And we gave the staff directions to go ahead and pursue more information on that as far as our numbers for the next couple of years. And the last thing we had was an escrow and development agreement with seven states property. There was a few changes to the lines on the plat due to the wetlands that were on the property. And that was all for the operations committee.
And finance and HR, Ms. Moffett.
Okay, as you can tell, we had a wonderful audit, thanks to our finance department who keeps us straight.
Yes, very good.
Great job. And for our finance committee meeting, we trued up some budget amendments for state allotments and we received federal funding for grants approved in the spring. And for HR, we received an insurance update by Ms. Brozi about the increase for employees on the state health benefits plan. And as a board, we approved a one-time $500 bonus to offset the cost for the rising healthcare premium. And that's it.
Board members, you can see the consent items that we reviewed at committee. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barger?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cook. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Action items, Ms. Brozi is going to give us a second reading on four different policies.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Tonight, I'm bringing four policy amendments for second reading and requesting board action. Policy 6315 regarding bus drivers, there were no changes requested from the first reading. Policy 7430 substitutes, this was an additional regulation that we were looking to add. There was one revision requested by the board at committee meetings, and that was to reduce the length of leave from two weeks to one week for buildings with only one assistant principal. And after the one week in buildings with only one AP, we would secure an interim or substitute assistant principal. Policies 7503 teleworking, there was one revision requested to the language to now say superintendent or designate as the decision maker with regards to those arrangements. And finally, policies 7510 our leave policy, there were no changes requested from the first reading of that policy.
Okay, board members, you've heard, received a second reading on these policies. We'll vote en masse on these, I believe without objection we will. So can I have a motion to approve the four policies as, as read?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Moffett. Second, second by Mr. Barger. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Mr. Cole, do you have some update for us?
Yes. So specific to goal four in our five-year strategic plan, which is categorized as talent development, there are two different areas. Goal 4.1, BCS will actively recruit and retain highly effective staff. One of the action steps that we will use to do that is to provide a highly competitive and dynamic salary and benefits package. Specific to goal 4.3, the act, one action step states, implement a program to reorganize or I'm sorry, to recognize and reward high performing staff. Underneath those two areas, this board along with my staff has been working on a proposal to provide performance bonuses to our teachers across the district who exceed growth as measured by EVOs. EVOs is the value-added system that the state of North Carolina uses to measure the effectiveness of our teachers, teachers in classes that have state exams. We think that these teachers who exceed growth deserve a performance bonus anytime we can afford to provide it. These are the very teachers that are most effective in our classrooms. And these are the teachers that we want to retain and that we want to place in leadership positions to better train all of our teaching staff so that all of our students can maximize their potential. So then the next question becomes, you know, the logistics of this, how do we want to go about doing it? I wanted to share just a recommendation tonight that we have come up with. This is not an action item. The board can, can think about this and can make a decision on it at, at one of your next meetings as the board sees fit. So just right now, EVOs data for BCS teachers from last school year. The first thing we have to remember is that we don't actually, our teachers aren't identified as meeting or exceeding growth typically until the end of October, sometimes early November each year. So this is what we call lagging data. So we've, we've known who these teachers are that exceeded growth for just a little over a month now. Across the district, we had 71 teachers that exceeded growth. We had 319 teachers meet expected growth and we had 74 teachers that did not meet expected growth last school year. The EVOs growth measure renorms every year because it's a different test and it's a different group of students. But I wanted to be clear, we have the state numbers next to that. And then we included a pie chart as well to just kind of show the public and the board the number of teachers we're talking about specific to last year. So not all of our teachers get EVOs growth because not all of our teachers teach classes that have a state exam. However, all of our teachers can request to teach classes that have state exams if they so choose. Across our school district, last year, we had 464 teachers that received an EVOs rating. And like I said before, 71 of those teachers had a student growth measure that exceeded expected growth over all the students that they taught. What we're recommending as a performance bonus structure for these 71 teachers, the total cost to the district to award a $1,000 performance bonus to all of these teachers, once you count in the additional expenses of a bonus that, that we have to pay, the total cost for this past year would be $93,947 if approved. So that would give $1,000 to every one of those 71 teachers. In addition, we do have some schools in our district that are categorized as low performing by the state of North Carolina based on their test scores. We want to have a way to recruit the best teachers that we can get in order to help turn those schools around so that they will exit low performing status. The quickest and most efficient way to do that is to have honestly better teachers and better leadership. We're constantly working on that, so I, that isn't a negative to any of our folks. 80% of a school's grade is made up of grade level proficiency. You can look all across the state. I'm not one to make excuses, but one hard trend you will see everywhere you go is that the more poverty you have in an area, the more negative impact you have on grade level proficiency. The current school grade model in North Carolina gives 20% to growth. However, we believe that growth actually is the best indicator of the quality of the instruction by a teacher in any given classroom. So that's the reason why we want to, we're recommending aligning this performance bonus to growth as opposed to just grade level proficiency. In order to do that, we're recommending that we give an additional $1,000 as a performance bonus to teachers that exceed growth that work in low performing schools. And the idea would be that if teachers that are working at schools that are not low performing, if they want to have access to be able to make that additional bonus by exceeding growth at a low performing school, as positions open, we have a process where teachers can request transfers if they wish. But that is not something that we want to force people to do. We want that to be their choice. So that, that number of teachers, teachers that exceeded growth at low performing schools is 11. So if we add an additional $1,000 for those 11 teachers, that comes to a total of $14,555 for those performance bonuses. So if we, if the board approves this structure, obviously we would add these two totals together. The total cost, if we provided this performance bonus structure to teachers that exceeded growth last school year would be $108,502. And of course, you know, we would, we would love to, our recommendation is that this be a performance bonus that is approved on a year-to-year basis. Because if we get to a point where we can't afford to do this, we won't, we don't want to have to change policy in order to make it go away. We, my team feels that the best way to handle this would just be an annual vote on whether or not we want to provide this performance bonus to our teachers. So the, you know, the, the first question for the board to consider, we don't have to be retroactive to last year. I mean, we could just say, we're going to approve a performance bonus structure like this beginning this school year. Or the board could elect to pay this amount to our teachers that we recognize tonight based on their data from last school year. And then we could vote again next year on this. So I think that's the, the course that we're recommending. But of course, the ultimate choice is up to the board. Again, this is not an action item for tonight as is, but for the board's consideration.
Board members, do you have, anybody have any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could. I just want to ask finance. So we see the dollar amount implications here. As far as the impact of the budget or anything that would have to be cut or anything, is there any impacts like that to make this happen? Yep. Okay. And the second thing I want to add is what Mr. Cole said about making this retroactive. I think it's important to celebrate our staff members who did it without knowing this was a possibility. You know, I think money is a, a good motivator for a lot of folks, but I would love to celebrate the people who didn't realize that money was going to be tied to their growth numbers this year. And I got to be honest with you, I, I don't know that I need another meeting to decide on this. I think I've already made my mind up. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll give you the floor back.
Anyone else have any, any, any comments?
I agree with Mr. Barger. Just looking at the different teachers, I recognized many of them tonight, some I did not. Some were beginning teachers or fairly new teachers who've only been teaching a couple of years. So we send out a shout out to them for sure. And thank you to all the teachers who are mentoring and encouraging the new teachers on staff. I agree with you. I want to do it, you know, retroactively. It would be a great surprise to these teachers who've already shown that they have exceeded growth. And I think it would encourage them and many others to do the same. I don't need any further thought about it. I would be ready and willing to do it tonight if everybody else is.
I think it's also important to recognize, you know, and acknowledge that we had a lot of teachers that met growth and that is what the state expects. of teachers that met growth, and that is what the state expects of a teacher. They expect, the minimum expectation is that you will meet growth. And so I'm proud of all of those teachers as well, but I think by recognizing the teachers, I call them the blue teachers, the teachers who exceed growth, it's just above and beyond. And I think that's why we want to reward them, and I also think it should be retroactive. I think it'll be a great motivator, and as Mr. Cole said, maybe some of those teachers might want to go to one of our low performing schools and help, help there as well. So I'm ready to vote.
Ms. Cook, do you have any comment?
Well, would you like me to make a motion? That's wonderful, Ms. Cook.
Well, in that case, I agree with everybody that's here. And this afternoon, we also had an opportunity to have EVOs thoroughly explained to us by a gal who was regional coordinator from DPI, and it was very good for those of us who are not as familiar with EVOs and how it's broken down and how a teacher meets or exceeds growth and how they do, or how they do not meet growth. So I think in retrospect and in light of seeing that, that all these teachers have deserved, worked hard for this, and as you say, it's not an expectation. They did it because it was their job and because they're excellent teachers, and I think I would like to see this happen, and I would like to make a motion that we approve this bonus for a total of $108,502.
Retroactive.
To be retroactive for this year because it's identifying these teachers that made the growth this past year, and for it to be taken from the fund balance as necessary.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have.
Be dispersed in January.
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 We have a motion to approve the numbers as presented by Mr. Cole, make that retroactive. Is there any further discussion? Oh, we also have a second from Mr. Barger. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to make one comment. When I got on the board three years ago, one of the things that I, actually when I ran for the board, one of the things that I thought that should be bought to the fore in terms of teacher compensation was performance pay, performance-based pay. And it's taken us a little while to get there, but I know from my own experience in private industry that performance-based rewards, financial rewards, they work. They really do. And the people that, that earned them should get them. The people that, that perform at the top should be recognized, not only in terms of an honor for what they've achieved, but also to give them some sort of monetary reward. And it's a great recruiting tool as well. Would you say, Ms. Prozey, wouldn't that help you? Yeah? So we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote's unanimous, and I believe we will. Thank you, Mr. Cole, for that. Was there anything else that you had?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we will take a break now for closed session. Does anybody have, can I get a motion from anyone?
Motion.
Motion from.
Second.
And second by Ms. Barger? Ms. Barger? Mr. Barger made a motion.
It's not starting that very well.
Ms. Moffett, seconded. Away we go. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel list as presented?
Aye.
We have a motion from Mr. Barger and a second from Ms. Smith. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion to approve closed session minutes.
Motion to approve closed session minutes by Ms. Cook. Second. Second by Ms. Moffett. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second. Take your pick.
Calm down. Okay. Steve Barger, I think, has moved that we adjourn. I think you've moved that about a half hour ago, didn't you? And, uh... Did you second it?
Second.
Ms. Cook has seconded.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?